Next we have up Steve Knox and on deck Patrick Kules.
Good evening, my name is Steve Knox, I reside at 4130 Greenbrier Drive here in Janesville. And first of all, thank you for allowing this great group of citizens to a very new process and procedure here for the city council. From a technical perspective, I have given you all my reasons for applying, but I will expand just a little bit more. I'm involved in our community. I've been involved with a local credit union that's making a difference in Janesville. I'm also involved in the Parks and Recreation Committee that, and I have personally seen positive impacts from this and other committees within this city and the passion that a number of those members to each committee bring. And in fact, Alexia didn't show up tonight, but three people on our Parks and Rec Committee applied for this position. That really shows the spirit and drive that these committee members have. It's a great thing, and frankly Ben would be a great person to select, I'll just say that. I'm involved with several ministries at church. That work is rarely talked about, but the church community is a major asset to this city and it helps thousands from many different walks of life. I'm thankful to be a part of that community and help wherever I can. And last but certainly not least, I'm involved with the Baton Memorial Committee. While it's not a time-consuming committee by any means, it's extremely important to keep the lives of our Janesville 99 forefront for not only our current citizens but future citizens. And I have a personal commitment to do that as I'm related to three of those survivors on that Baton Memorial that's down at the old, that's down on Franklin. I've shared my top priorities with you, the city council, on my application. And just as a refresher, those were city infrastructure needs, securing a stronger relationship with the state and the county. And finally, what I mentioned was somewhat of a soft quality-of-life piece, if you will. Now, I shared a number of those responses with my friends and some of those who have encouraged me to apply. And one of the questions that came back to me is, why don't you, why don't you mention securing private sector jobs? Well, my personal opinion is that a city council person cannot create those jobs. What we, or you, as city council members can do is create policy, is create policies and direct city staff to look at options to entice businesses to consider Janesville their home. Previous councils have acted as one-offs, if you will, one-off motions to help secure potential businesses. The most recent, and was mentioned earlier this evening, top of mind is Shine Medical Technologies. While we've had to see ground broken, there is no question that this is going to be a game changer and it will bring a ton of opportunity to not only Janesville but the Rock County and Dane County areas. Our middle leadership team is critical, sorry. Is there? Can you hear this? I'm okay, alright. With our middle leadership team, it's critical that we continue to give this team direction, strategic direction, and check in frequently because as we're all aware, the business climate continues to evolve. Now certainly Janesville cannot be the home to every new venture, but having the tools readily available is critical to the city's success. One other piece I'd like to expand upon is that quality-of-life piece. As you're aware, I chair the Parks and Rec Committee, and frankly, that's one busy department. Thanks to our new leadership team in the city, several pieces through that department have been brought to your agendas over the last few months. One is the Riverside Splash Pad, which I am on that committee, and most recently was a skate park at Bond Park. These have been discussed for over a decade in some form or fashion, and now, now it's time, we either make the decision or move forward. And I believe I'm the, I believe I'm the right person to make the decisions and move forward. As families evaluate their current living situations, these soft pieces of the city make decisions easier for families looking to relocate from surrounding areas. Lower crime compared to prior cities and amenities are definitely a reason to move here. And I know several families that have moved here and work elsewhere specifically for these reasons. If we don't, we'll erode and fall behind and we won't be as enticing. And I know I have a little bit of time and it is limited, but again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and I do ask for your consideration in this process. I will mention that I am traveling for work next week, but I've been okayed by my boss and some other coworkers that if a conference call is approved, that I would be able to step away from my business to speak specifically about this council. So with that, do you have any questions of me?
Questions for the speaker, Mr. Farrell.
Steve, I know you have a background in purchasing.
Yes.
And a buyer. Can you expand on how those skills or background might assist the council if, if you do think it would assist the council?
Sure, I've, I've looked at this a number of ways and I know that it's been talked about in the past and I don't know how frankly, how much it is utilized, but some type of buying consortium within cities in the county, it would give us more buying power frankly and help leverage some of these type budgets. So that's something I have thought about in the past and I've brought up to previous councils, but that's one piece of the purchasing pie.
Okay, and the other question, I know you've got a pretty demanding career, do you think there'll be any issue with availability for meetings or anything like that?
No, I mean, I will say, I'm not going to say that I'm going to be a hundred percent, I'll be honest and upfront with that, but I have contacted my employer, I have the blessing of my employer, my supervisors and coworkers, so no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bobzine.
Thank you, Mr. Knox. How do we as a city and as a council balance those quality-of-life issues with our needs? Paying for infrastructure, getting the garbage picked up, you know, that's a, that's a balance we, we deal with all the time. How would you describe your opinion on that?
Well, I'd have to say, to help balance that, we need a stronger relationship with the state. Revenue from the state to Janesville is sadly little compared to other communities in this area. We need to start, when this, this came up again, this is several councils ago, it wasn't a priority obviously, it is now. And I think we have the right people in place to start building that bridge and really go after frankly, the funds that should be dedicated to Janesville. Now, if that doesn't happen, you know, short-term, we do need to look at the wants and, you know, the wants and needs. I think the strategic plan is going to help. I think being upfront and forthright by having the skate park and the splash pad in the CIP for this year was the right thing to do, and we can debate. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Leibert.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Knox, I guess it's sort of a follow-up to Mr. Bobzine's question. I was just curious as to what your thoughts were on the city's borrowing trends, are we borrowing too much with capital projects? Does our policies seem pretty fiscally responsible? Just curious what your thoughts are on that.
One minute.
I think we're right, we're teetering on, on the line right now of possibly borrowing too much. A question was asked about the road repair. I will come out and say this is that I am in favor of putting together a smart referendum plan and word it properly and, and explain properly to the citizens and let's, let the citizens decide on how that specific issue needs to be resolved.
Thank you, that's all.
Other questions for the speaker? You have about twenty-some seconds left.
Wonderful, well, again, thank you and you have a great group of candidates here tonight and good luck on your decision, it's going to be a long night, so thank you.
Next speaker will be Robert Yeomanz over here, and after that Barry Badicher.
Good evening, thanks for what you're doing. We all have enjoyed this opportunity tremendously. I'm pretty excited about it. The, a little bit about me, I was born and raised in Janesville. I left for school, I got a bachelor, I received a bachelor's in business administration degree from the University of Alaska in Fairbanks. So at least two of us in the room have been to Fairbanks. And then I got an MBA from the University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill. I returned to Janesville to run a small business for, it's a family business, it's called Central Vending Company. My wife and I have raised two kids here in town. As far as what I've done with the city, I've been on the planning commission, I accepted a position on a planning commission. The week before Walmart said that they were going to build a new facility, and I spent two of my three years dealing with Walmart and then, and then some of the other time dealing with the Kennedy Homes subdivision and then another large subdivision, well two other large subdivisions. Some of those things didn't transpire, but that was, it made it an interesting three years. Most recently, I served on the sidewalk committee. And, and I have to tell you, it was, it was a pleasure working on the sidewalk committee, even though it was a very contentious issue. The process of consensus, as led by Carol Tidwell, was really an amazing process and I think that it, it worked very well to try and solve a long-term problem for the city. Sam was on the committee with me and I think he can attest to that. Within my industry, I've served also on several boards, state and national boards. I was involved in a buying group that, I was the sixteenth member, started in Illinois, it's now a national buying group. I was in charge of the, the purchasing committee for a decade and on the board of directors. And then I also have served seventeen years on the YMCA Camp Manitowish Board of Directors, ending my, ending my term as president. And that's, that was also a wonderful experience, it was a board with forty-four people, so we also had to deal with consensus quite a bit. And Manitowish is known for teaching collaborative leadership techniques. So I have to say that I enjoy the process of governance, but I've never relished the process of running for office. And so I think this is a unique opportunity for me and so I jumped at the chance. Any questions?
Questions for the speaker, please. Mr. Markline.
You led right into my question already. You seem awfully qualified for this position, but you never have run for the city council in all your years at Janesville, why not?
Well, there have been a couple of reasons. One is, as a small business owner, one has economic ups and downs, and I really never wished to put myself in a position where I could alienate some of my accounts if I made a decision on the council. I, I found some challenges on the sidewalk committee with, with some of my accounts not particularly happy with, with my decisions. But I'm at the stage of my life where I'm not too concerned about that anymore.
I can relate.
Anything else, Mr. Markline? Thank you, Mr. Bobzine.
Thank you, and thank you for your previous service to the city. Where do you see Janesville in five years with the GM plant idle? Where do you see our economic growth coming from?
Boy, if I had a crystal ball, that'd be great. Quite frankly, I, I see us probably struggling trying to meet the financial needs of the city in five years, just as we are today. I don't see anything on the horizon which is going to change the dynamics of state money coming to our size city rather than Milwaukee or Madison. And so there's obviously some things that need to be done at the state level in order to get us into parity with, with larger areas. As far as the GM plant goes, that's, that's a tough question because we need the tax base that General Motors provides. And, and I would be, as a council member, if they came to us and said, we'd like to give you the, the GM plant for one dollar, I'd be really concerned because that would eliminate a large, large portion of our property taxes until we could, to figure out what, how to privatize it again. But I, quite frankly, I don't see, I don't see a crystal, I don't see a wonderful, large company coming to Janesville and, and I think that we ought to plan accordingly. I think that, that you all have a strategic plan and I think that's the important thing is to figure out how you're going to get there.
I'll jump in here. Roads, we need them repaired, how do we do it?
One road at a time. You have to tax for it, there's, there's no other way around it. The national government says they don't have the money to repair roads, the state government says they don't have the money to repair roads, and we certainly don't have the money to repair roads. But if we decide that that's an important thing for the city of Janesville, we need to allocate the resources for it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leibert.
Thank you, and hopefully I can call you Bob.
Sure.
If you'd like right now. We spent so many hours locked in a little room. We're brothers now. First off, thank you too for applying. I've had a lot of friends work for your company, you, you have good salaries, good benefits, and they've had nothing but great things to say about your, your business. My question was stolen earlier, but I did have a question that we haven't really touched on too much is public safety. The fact that we have the exact same number of firefighters and EMTs as we did in nineteen eighty, thirty-five years ago, and yet calls have more than doubled. You know, we're looking at the possibility of maybe adding a fifth ambulance to the fleet, kind of wondering what your thoughts are on budget, budget needs versus public safety and, and where, you know, again, where maybe we see that, that departments or departments in the next few years?
Well, obviously, public safety is important, I think it's one of the top priorities that the city has. Whether we fund it or not is somewhat department, departmental. I think that the person that's in charge of the EMTs, EMTs, the fire chief has to come up with a budget that will allow us to provide the safety that he needs and we need. I don't see that as a council issue as much as I see that as a management issue.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Mr. Yeomanz, I know you've been in business for a long time. What things do you think the city could do to attract more businesses into the city? What type of incentives and what things do we need to be a game player in bringing in some of these companies?
Well, I think that we've used the TIF districts for some time. Some of them have been successful, some of them haven't, but I think we've done a very nice job of trying to make it attractive for people. I know that there are limits that we can do, but I think that, that being concerned about the downtown, trying to make the city more attractive and trying to make sure that our roads are appropriate and our safeties, our safety is important and will all help attract along with school systems.
Okay, do you think there's any things that would prevent a city, a company from coming here that, for example, ordinances that are too stringent or the governmental atmosphere, do you think there's any negatives to that?
I'm, I, well, I've been here for a long time and I would have to say that at certain times I've heard colleagues complain, but on the other hand, most of those people are still here and I think that they feel that there's been an improvement over the years.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, other questions for the speaker? You have about a minute and a half, anything else you'd like to add?
Well, just, thank you all for what you do. The community probably doesn't, doesn't know how hard it is and, but we appreciate it and best of luck in making your decision, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Next up, we have Barry Badicher over here and Shane Seaman over there.
Ready? I'm waiting for your timer to start.
Timer? And there you go.
Thank you. I'm going to make this quick, you, everybody on the council knows me, knows what I've done. There's a lot of people come up, since I've been here tonight, talking about what they'd like to do or what they would do, I've already done it. You know, you want to talk about the interstate, the, in my mind, the best-looking building in Janesville is being built right now, I was part of that. You know, downtown, I'm the one that's done the majority of the work or helped the majority of work. So I've been there, I've done that, and I want to continue to help this, this community move forward. I think we need to do a better job of portraying ourselves as a first-class city. I don't think we do as good of a job as we could do right now. We are, we just don't get that out in the media, we just don't tell the story, the real referendum. We didn't do a good job on telling the community why we needed to do that. I think we need to do a better job of helping the city go to that step, drawing new businesses, maybe it's not manufacturing, maybe technology-based, especially downtown. I think we just need to do a better job of that. So anyways, I'm opening up for questions.
Very good, questions for the speaker, Mr. Leibert.
Thank you, Council President, and Barry, it's always good to see you.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought you said something really interesting about, you know, how we need to do a better job of, you know, kind of telling our story about who we are and explaining different policies. And I'm, I'm also with you, I think we didn't do a great job explaining the referendum, what it was about. Now, I know the city can't use its tax dollars to promote and sort of referendum one way for or against, and I think we're all kind of hoping for Superman to come along, someone with maybe deep pockets to help run a campaign.
Right.
To promote it. Do you have any thoughts on, you know, how to, if, if the referendum were to come up again, you know, how to, how to work with the private sector and as council members as individuals, we could all support it at our own time? And kind of how you would, because I know you've done a lot of PR-type stuff before.
And, and I think that's what it is, you know, we have a, we have a small group in this town, I like to call the vocal minority, that, I don't know most of the time who those people are, but I, I assume they're not necessarily the people out doing the work. They're sitting, some of them, not all of them, but I have this picture of them sitting at their computer eating Twinkies, bitching about everything that's ever happened in this world, but they've never contributed to making it a better place. And we're listening to the, you know, the fire station is another great example. If we're going to portray ourselves as a first-class community, then that's, that's a great example of what we can do. If we start shortcutting on that because we're listening to these small group of people saying cut, 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 cut for a, a building that we know is going to be there fifty, sixty years from now. When, when people come to this town to look to possibly, you know, either bring jobs or add jobs, that's a, that's a great example of where we're at. And you talk about safety and, you know, how we're going to need more, more firefighters and more police officers. Everything's based on volume. We need to attract first-class businesses. To do that, you need to attract those type of people that want to live in this town, either by, by the example we show downtown, by, you know, growing downtown and making that a better place to come and spend time and live, those type of things. So to do that, getting back to your question, when we talk about Janesville, we have to, first of all, as a council, because it's, you know, other than, than Mark, we're, we're the point people. So when we get out there, either talking to the media or, or neighbors or friends or whoever it is, we get, we have to brag about the story of Janesville and make us, make our voices as loud as possible. I mean, we really do. And then, you know, that comes down to the city employees and other committees and anybody else, we as a community have start, have to start bragging about Janesville. And let's be honest, it's a, it's a place to brag about. How many people do we know, starting with our congressman, moved back to Janesville because he said, this is where I want to raise my family? You know, Paul could move to a Republican district and make his job a lot easier, right? But he chooses to live in Janesville because it's a great city. I happened to, just happened to be downtown this morning and Senator Feingold came by, you know, another person that came from this town, and he couldn't stop bragging about Janesville. We meet these people every single day, but yet we just struggle to tell the story of how great of a place it is. I mean, how many people still today forget to lock their doors at night? Maybe not as much as we did twenty years ago, but we still do it, right? I mean, I, I always laugh when I'm showing a building to somebody that comes from somewhere, you know, outside of the state or outside of Janesville, and we're in the middle of nowhere, and you're like beep, 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 and they hit their doors and like, no, you're in Janesville, you're good, you don't have to worry about it. And, and they look at me like, you're out of your mind, I'm locking my doors. That's the story we need to tell, and that's, and I, and I think the council can do that. You know, there's other really important decisions the council's going to make in the next X amount of years, you know, next, you know, look in the crystal ball with Bob, who knows? We need to do a better job bragging about our town so we can bring those businesses in. And it might not be manufacturing, you know, at one point, we're going to have to realize that the world has changed. You know, you tried to talk to GM, Mark, we don't know what's going to go on that plant. Most likely, it's going to look just like it does today. So we need to get past it. If we can bring somebody to GM, hey, that's, that's in the lottery, right? But if not, then what are we going to do? Are we going to keep going down the same path? Or are we going to kind of open, you know, look outside the box a little bit and see what else is out there? What type of job sector is out there that we can bring to this town and make it different? I really think it starts with downtown, and I know because of my involvement, sometimes I hit that too hard, but I really think that's a big part, when people want to come here, they look at that and, you know, that's, that's your center of the community. Do I want to spend time there? Do I want to invest there? You know, I know so many people think that the city can just wave their magic wand and say, boom, the Monterey is done, or, you know, GM is filled. We can be cheerleaders, we can help with financing, there's certain things we can do, but at the end of the day, we have to convince people to invest in this community. So how do we do that? So, sorry for the long drawn-out answer.
Thank you, Mr. Bobzine.
Thank you. You mentioned, you know, portray ourselves better and get the information out there. Well, I was at a, a citizen referendum forum last fall here in this chamber, four people showed up. It was in the Gazette, it was on the radio, it was on our website, four, and I was one of those four. How do we get that out there to people? I, I.
I, I think it's a great question, Mark. You know, I'm the vice-chair right now of the Downtown Development Alliance and we struggle to, you know, we keep, we hear from people like Mr. Neal, you know, I want to be involved, I'm a younger person, God, we wish we could get him to a DDA meeting. We need younger people with some new ideas. You know, we, we run into those people all the time, but then we can't get them to come. And, you know, whether it's because they're involved with their jobs and their families and things like that, we really need in this town a more involvement from the, the younger sector so they can start, you know, also singing the praises of this town. So how do we do that? You know, I, I think the way we're, like with the DDA, what we've done this year, you know, we've done, we're doing events, we're trying to do things to draw people so we can talk to them and share the story and get them excited. It's, nothing happens overnight, you know, we, we're real good at this town of coming up with great big plans, and we start small and they go huge, and we forget about the middle part. And we have to realize, sometimes things don't happen overnight, but we've got to keep pushing forward and not giving up. And when you have four people in a meeting, that's really discouraging. So you've got to take a step back and say, why? And how do we talk to these people? You know, how did we advertise that meeting? Was it on Twitter? You know, was it social media? Is it the right social media? You know, the stuff you and I are using, our kids aren't looking at. We don't know what they're looking at because they don't want us on it, right? So we need younger people to help us out. So we just got to be pushing forward, but we do need involvement from the younger group of Janesville, they're going to help us with that. And, and sometimes, you know, it's all us old guys, except for Sam. And, you know, we need, we need people, you know, thank God we've got Sam because he's that connection that we don't, the rest of us don't have. So we, we just got to keep, keep yelling, shouting from the rooftops, Mark, I guess that's the best thing we can do.
Mr. Markline.
I'm Barry, I asked the same question to Mr. Yeomanz on here, quite qualified.
One minute.
For this position, why haven't you applied and run for council on your own?
Because I have a wife that says if I ever ran, she'd kill me, and you know my wife and, and she's terrifying, small and Irish, nothing worse. She spoke to a council member and, and he said, you know, Barry should think about this, and she came home one night and she goes, you know what? I think you should, I think it's time. So I would have done this years ago, I love this stuff. I, you know, I helped run the shares campaign and I don't like, elections are not fun, but being part of the process and making a difference to me is a big deal. So, you know, I'm up for it at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Farrell.
I only have a few seconds, quickly, the RISE program, do you see that succeeding over the long-term, Barry? I mean, what, do you think it's really going to happen in five to ten years?
I don't ever want to say no to anything, but I think we need to be realistic. It's going to take a lot of work and, and a lot of effort and, and once again, if it, it may be smaller, maybe we start smaller and grow of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Gruber, Mr. Richard Gruber here, Douglas Thorpe over here.
Mr. Council President, members of the council, Rich Gruber, 4212 Orion Drive, Janesville. The questions that I've been listening to you ask are questions that perhaps I can hit some of them up front. One of the One of the more important questions that always comes to play is, "Why haven't I chosen to run for elective office previously?" And I'll tell you, it's two reasons in particular. One, if you had a chance to review my application, you'll know that I have been exceptionally active on a whole host of different city committees, county committees, school district committees, and other civic engagements that have taken a lot of my time. And frankly, that time's been very well spent, and as much as we've accomplished a lot in those particular activities. The second reason is perhaps closer to what you definitely need to know. As you're aware, I represent Mercy Health System in a lot of development matters. And through the last several years, I've spent a lot of time in front of the Plan Commission, I've spent a lot of time in front of the council and others, as we've gone through a growth spurt in our organization. And frankly, I didn't want to put myself in a position of having a conflict of interest where a Mercy project would be considered by the city, and I would have to recuse myself because of an obvious conflict. So that's held me back as well. Most recently, I have to explain the personal reasons why I seriously gave consideration to filing papers and running in the April cycle. Unfortunately, on a personal level, my son decided to get married in October, my daughter decided to get married in December. In the middle of all of that, we did a remodeling project at home, and by the way, my company was involved in a major merger. So I got a little distracted and didn't really have the time to do the due diligence necessary to really come forward as an active and solid candidate. I will tell you this, that if I am appointed to the council position, it's fully my intent in the next cycle to run for that office. I believe that I can bring some unique talents and skills to the council that are important as we look at the future of Janesville and where Janesville is heading. The easy answer to the roads issue is, let's put all the options on the table, and let's have a conversation about what's the best mix of options that we can possibly put together that will address our needs to make sure that roads and other infrastructure issues are adequately funded for the future. That's first and foremost something, a discussion that needs to happen sooner than later, and I would be a strong proponent of having that conversation. Interesting dilemma Janesville finds itself in is this. The state of Wisconsin has imposed tax levy limits on the city of Janesville, which has substantially curtailed your ability to generate new revenue, to fund programs, and fund existing needs that are there. The only way out of that deep hole, quite honestly, is to take advantage of every opportunity that we have within statute to go through that economic development process that's going to build our tax base by new construction, expansion of existing businesses, and attracting new businesses. We've done some remarkably good things over the course of the past few years to make Janesville more attractive. The shovel-ready commercial and industrial sites that we now have available is a good example of one of those programs that didn't exist previously. But it's a program that today, if we market it positively, it puts us with a leg up over many other communities that don't have that same level of shovel-ready attractiveness. We've done a good job of, I think, repurposing some of our buildings, you know, within the community. And that has helped in terms of demonstrating that we do have a quality downtown. We've got some visionary plans that we've adopted through the years. I happened to have had the opportunity to serve on the city's comprehensive plan update process in 2007, 2008, 2006, '07, and '08. I also served on the downtown subplan process. I worked on the Fourth Ward subplan process. I worked on the Look West Neighborhood Subplan Process. So it's not that I'm not familiar with the plans that we have available to us. I was part of the Arise Project Planning Team. I've sat with the team that's been working on the Brownfield projects within the city of Janesville. I've also had the good fortune in my time here in Janesville of working with a lot of city staff on a lot of different development projects. And I can honestly tell you that as a developer, I've never really had any substantial issues working with city staff. The secret I've found in working with city staff is, take a concept to them. Sit down with them and say, "Hey, on a napkin, this is what we're thinking of doing. Let's talk our way through this project." And make them part of the solution to where you're going to ultimately deliver that project. Following that process, I've invariably had better projects done. We've gotten through the issues that up front, if you kind of put your feet down firmly in the sand and say, "Hey, I'm not going to budge from this," you get through those things. And you develop a working relationship that's positive. It's good for the city, it's good for the developer, and frankly, it makes projects go through in exceptionally well-thought-through fashion. And that's something that's been very key and very important. So those relationships, to me, are critical. As we go forward as a council, trying to set up a development community that's going to attract economic development, let's make sure that we instruct our developers out there that the best way to get along with the city is to work with the city and use the city's resources and tools in a fashion that we get the best of all worlds combined into our projects. That works really well. In terms of getting out into the community, one of the things that I'm a real believer in, I love the listening sessions that you have here at the council chambers, but I would suggest that you'd have better, greater numbers of people interested if you take those listening sessions out into the neighborhoods. It used to be done that way. You would have a regular meeting out on the east side, or a regular meeting down in the Fourth Ward, or a regular meeting to be held in the Look West Neighborhood, where you go to the people that you want to listen to, as opposed to expecting them to come to you and not have the turnout that frankly is disappointing. With that being said, I would be open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker, please? Mr. Bob Zine.
Thanks, Mr. Gruber. One question. Next budget cycle is going to be pretty tough for the city of Janesville. There may be some cuts involved. Where in the city, city government, would you see cuts easiest to make?
I don't think that there is any cut that's easier to make than any other cut within the city. There's an expectation within the community that we all have our priorities for what we use and what we need and what's going to be important. What's more important, I think, is that we have a process in place where we can sit down and set some priorities. By setting priorities and making some determinations of what is more important? Is public safety more important than roads? Are roads more important than parks? Are parks more important than whatever other function that we have within the city? If we don't set priorities, then we're going to struggle when it comes time to make those budget decisions and those strategic investment opportunities. That's the best way to approach it, from my perspective.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell.
Mr. Gruber, what do you think with the GM situation? What should the city be doing to be proactive in that situation? What do you think we could be doing that we're not doing?
I think up until the point in time in September, when the international UAW contract is finalized, hopefully, and we have a better picture of what the status of that plant is going to be, we need to sit by, monitor the situation, and not do anything that would in any manner, shape, or form be cause for either the UAW or General Motors to get a sense that we're trying to interfere with their process of decision-making at the collective bargaining table. Once that decision's made, then Katy bar the door. There's wonderful opportunities for that plant to be redeveloped as condominium, industrial, commercial sites, if in fact the plant is turned loose from the contract. There's ample opportunity with a site that size, given the fact that you have both the plant and the area to the south where the vehicles were assembled in order to be transported out of the area. That's a huge parcel of property that could be customized in such a fashion with its excellent railhead availability.
One minute.
The ideas, there's many different ideas that could be used to approach that property. Once we get green light, and once we're in a position where we can deal with it, then let's make something happen, and it happened creatively.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Leibert.
We've got a few seconds here, Mr. Gruber. Recently, the council, essentially by consensus, decided to keep the separation of liquor from the rest of grocery stores. Just kind of curious what your thoughts were and how the city can move forward with working with a big-box developer to make sure that they can come here and that we work with them in a smooth transition.
Hopefully, the only impediment that the big-box developer would use, would not be the separation of liquor within their standard floor plan. Hopefully, there's other issues that go beyond that. My suggestion to the big-box developers and to city staff is, let's sit down together, have a conversation, and figure out what the obstacles might be.
Thank you.
I have the five ballots, and I will read them in the order, alphabetical order...
Five ballots or six?
Or, excuse me, six ballots.
Thank you.
And I will read them in the order of alphabetical order by council members, starting with Councilmember Bob Zine. And he cast five selections, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize in advance. And I will just say the last name. Badicher, Gruber, Khan, Neal, Yeomans. Would you like me to repeat? Councilmember Fitzgerald, Badicher, Gruber, Knox, Matheson, Yeomans. Councilmember Leibert, Babcock, Dobson, Gruber, Seaman, Yeomans. Councilmember Mark Lane, Badicher, Draves, Gruber, Thorpe, Yeomans. Council President Seaberson, Badicher, Gruber, Knox, and Yeomans. And there are only four cast.
That's correct. Of course, I got to read that sideways. Okay. For us optically challenged on the dais, can you make that a little larger?
[inaudible]
Yeah, let's just do that. And then just make it bigger. Yeah. Yeah, collapse the rest of those columns. Okay, if I'm reading that correctly, I'll read, I'll read the top, going down from the top. Babcock received one, will not move forward. Badicher, on the next round, I should say. Badicher received four, will be in the next round. Briarmoon, zero. Jeremy Bregeman, zero. Benjamin Dobson, two. Again, those last three will not be in the next round. Vanessa...
Graves.
Graves. Thank you. One vote, not moving forward. Gruber, five. Thank you for that. Next round. Mr. Hannah, zero. The next individual was not here. They get zero, will not move forward. Juddal, one, not moving forward. Khan, one, not moving forward. Knox, three, next round. Kules, zero, not moving forward. Madison, one, not moving forward. Neal, one, not moving forward. Seaman, one, not moving forward. Stidinski, zero, not moving forward. Thorpe, two, not moving forward. Yeomans, six, moving forward. So if you will just highlight those so we can just re, whoops, we can make sure everybody here can see those. But if I see that correctly, we've got Badicher, is that correct, at the top? We've got Badicher at four. We've got Gruber at five. We've got Knox at three. We've got Yeomans at six. That would be four individuals. Is, I want to just make sure that that's what everybody voted for. I see four names up there. Is that correct? Is there a desire for the council to reduce that list any further? Mr., did you have something, Mr. Leibert? Please.
So we have four that kind of came to the top. Is there any room in the process to go back to maybe people who got two and figure out who would be the fifth person for next Tuesday?
Well, I think what we, I think we've, we just, we set the ground rules prior to the vote. I think that question, which is an excellent one, we probably should have established prior to the vote.
Okay.
Okay? There are four names up there. Is there any desire to reduce that list any further? Or would, if I understand from prior conversation, we would then invite all four individuals back for the 17th at 7:00 p.m. Is that, is that the wishes of the council? That appears to be the wishes of the council. So we would, again, thank everybody for coming, again, for those four individuals that we named. Mr. Yeomans, Mr. Knox, Mr. Gruber, Mr. Badicher. The meeting next week will start at 7:00 p.m. I will, as earlier noted by Mr. Knox, he will be on the road and will need to do a conference call. So I'll call upon the city manager and his staff to provide appropriate technology for us to hear Mr. Knox and ask questions for that 30-minute timeframe.
We can do that.
Thank you. For those of you in the audience, and those of you listening, what will occur is, starting at 7 o'clock on the 17th, we will open it up for testimonials. Anyone can come and speak for an individual. They'll have one minute to speak. After those testimonials are done, and probably a short break, each individual, by draw, which will be done by the city attorney, excuse me, by the city manager and witnessed by the city attorney, the order upon presentation. They'll each have 30 minutes to present, answer questions from the council. After that time, the selection of the new city council member will be done. There is a question. Mr. Mark Lane?
I just wanted to, before everybody goes, thank everybody for coming and kind of recap what my notes were here. And Council President...
Yes, sir.
Seaberson mentioned it earlier. The energy and the talent that we had in this room tonight was phenomenal, and I would love to be able to harness this resource. I kind of talked to everybody a little bit about this. But find a pet project. If you're not on the four, or even if you are, find a pet project and volunteer your efforts toward it. Use that energy and that talent that you brought here tonight. You know, try to find a mentor, somebody older, or somebody that can kind of guide you through to go through the process. I went through it alone, and I wished I had one. It would have helped a lot. We heard some great, wonderful ideas of how we can make Janesville a better, a better city for all of us, all ages and all income levels. Some of these ideas were old ones that we had aware of, but it's always nice to hear them again, and some were new that I think, well, we, so everybody taking notes what we can do. So thanks again. Appreciate it. The other one is, on these four, send us emails, write us letters on the internet. One of the nice things about waiting till Tuesday is, gives you and the city of Janesville a chance to speak your mind on who you want, or some people will say who you don't want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, before we move on to item number five? Seeing none. Matters not on the agenda? Anything? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn? Is there a motion? Mr. Leibert, is there a second? By Mr. Fitzgerald. Please vote.
[unintelligible]
Have a good evening. Thank you. Push that button. Do we vote? Did you get it?